Hello, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, feeling a little bit under the weather. But the March 19th, Lane Community College Board of Education Work Session will now be called to order. Celia, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Kevin Alltucker.
Here.
Denise Diamond.
Here.
Austin Fullnagy.
Here.
Sophie Gibson.
Here.
Steve Mattel.
Over here.
Zach Mulholland.
Here.
Julie Weisman.
Here.
He's out. Okay, we will be moving on to the land recognition. The land acknowledgement speaker for this evening is Austin Fullnagy. Austin, would you please provide the recognition?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to start our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land that we are on is the traditional homelands of the Kalapuya people. The Kalapuya were stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted. We started our meeting with humility and reverence to the original inhabitants, the Kalapuya. Just a brief reflection with this land acknowledgement, we always, as an institution, we always want to be aware of this, this acknowledgement, the land that we're on, and the good work that we're doing on this land. We never want, and our institution, I feel, does not treat this just as an agenda item. We do things that actually live up to this acknowledgement. And I just want to continually to remind ourselves as we read these acknowledgements that we continue that as we do the good work on this land. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. We're moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any requested changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
A motion to approve the agenda. Second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
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 And all opposed, nay. And it passes unanimously. Please note that the equity lens has been provided for the board's reference. Do we have any questions or comments to the responses to information requests?
Chair Mulholland, I just want to note that we had a late add this afternoon to the responses to information requests, and just want to make sure that the board has been able to review those in case there are questions. And can you verify that also, Celia? There was a late add. I think it was about compensation.
Yes, it should have gone out about 4:00 PM.
Great, thank you.
Right, moving on, we will be moving on to discussion items. Our first item of discussion is board policies. President Bolger, will you please introduce the speaker?
Yes, the board might recall that the board routinely reviews policies to ensure that they remain up to date and effective and also legally compliant. Tonight, we're going to be presenting six policies for first read, two Title IX related policies that require updates due to recent federal regulatory changes, and then there are four that are still in that first read stage that are being carried forward from the March 5th meeting. The college has some recommendations for you that are related to the interfund loan policy, and also has some recommendations regarding incorporating a policy that is not in the policy library, the one that was adopted by the board, into some policies that are four-digit policies that are from the policy library. So Brett Rolet is going to provide this review. Brett?
Thank you, Chairman Mulholland, President Bolger, members of the board. Before you this evening. Is that my laptop? Testing. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So you have before you this evening six policies, as President Bolger mentioned. I do apologize, there's a typo on the cover page of the document in the packet. I don't think anyone saw it, but I'm just outing myself. So we approved, the board approved Compensation and Benefits Board Policy 515 at the beginning of the month. So you have six policies this evening. If it's okay with the board, I know there's probably the most discussion around three of the policies, Board of Educational Officers agendas and chairperson's role. So if we're able to tackle the three other policies first, then we'll come back to those. To begin, we have Board Policy 275, interfund loans. That's come before you. This is the third time now, and I know there have been some questions in the past. We also have Vice President Flath here this evening, who is able to answer any questions that you may have regarding this policy. So I guess we can start there and open it up with questions or comments.
Brett, I'd actually like it, could you introduce all of them? And then I'd like to actually start with the newest ones first, and then go to interfund loans, and then to the agenda setting ones, if we could.
Sure, no problem. The other three policies, as I mentioned, that are being brought back before you this evening for further discussion, as mentioned, is Board Policy 320, Chairperson's Role, Board Policy 2210, Board of Educational Officers, and Board Policy 2340 agendas. And then the other two policies that are before you this evening are related to Title IX, and a federal judge struck down the Biden administration's Title IX rules last month. And so we have been encouraged by Karen Smith, Legal Counsel at OCCA, to basically, as you may recall, you updated our Title IX board policies late last year with the new Biden language. And so what we're proposing to do here is to revert back to the 2020 guidance for Title IX. And so all of the suggested revisions for Board Policy 3430, Prohibition of Harassment, and Board Policy 3433, Prohibition of Sexual Harassment under Title IX, are revisions to comply with the federal judge's order.
And this is, I believe, Brett, this is the advice that we've received from the OCCA attorney as well.
Yep, and we do anticipate that there will likely be new rules published under the Trump administration. But in the meantime, the guidance from both Department of Education and from OCCA is to use the, basically, the standards that were in place in 2020 before the Biden rules were implemented.
Really brief question. Did we have a policy change when the Biden rules came into play? I don't remember necessarily us passing a board policy around that.
Yes, I believe it was November that you updated. So most of these changes are just going back to the language that was in place.
And then November 24, or?
Yes, November 24.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments about the Title IX policies first?
Nope.
Okay, not seeing any. I'd like it if we could open up the Julie Weisman recommendations document to discuss the sort of the two recommendations around interfund loans.
Yes, I think Chair Mulholland, I think what we do is we move that one, the one that we just did, the Title IX policy, onto the full board, I mean, to the next board meeting to take action. I think that was the pleasure.
Having not seen any comments or questions, I think that's correct.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
What you can see here in black under BP 275 is the first half of the language that Brett had recommended. What you see in underlined text is things that I had recommended adding, which would be ensuring that interfund loans from the early retirement fund would only be used for delayed eighth quarter payments from the Oregon Legislature and be repaid the next year within 30 days of receiving the eighth quarter payment. In the next line, you see in orange, recommendations from Julie, which I think actually came from Brett's recommendations that I had failed to pull forward. And so I'd just like to start by saying that what is in orange, I think, is valuable to add and keep in the proposed new changes. And I think what I would like to ask is how people feel about the underlined words, and if those are worth adding as well, or if you think that those are not needed to have sufficient side rails around how this money is spent.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Chairman Mulholland, I really would like to have Vice President Flath talk about the underlined in green regarding the eighth quarter payment. She's got a clarification that may be very, very helpful to the board as the board is looking at this language.
Thank you.
Yeah, the challenge with this policy is this policy is intended to help with fund accounting issues, not cash flow issues. So the college has like two bank accounts and a couple of pool accounts, and they're essentially already pooled. And what we end up doing is to have fund accounting issues at the end of the year. And let me give you an example. Let's pretend, worst-case scenario, that for some reason, property tax collections for our debt payment doesn't come in. At the end of the year, we would have to have that fund not be in a negative balance as a whole. So we would use a loan program from other funds. So it wouldn't be a cash flow issue because we would already be paying that cash out of one of our funds. The concern I would have about this language is, of course, we could make it work. We wouldn't really be able to use that language, but five years from now, it might be really confusing. So I'd prefer to go back to the original language as opposed to trying to add early retirement into that and adding more confusion.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
So just for clarity, my orange comments are actually to replace your underlined green comments. It wasn't to bring forth anything from the past. I just felt that that my recommendation is, is that we actually keep the more open language, that the repayment of the loan must be budgeted according to approved schedule and at a stated rate of interest, full stop. Like, not adding that very specific language that I think is actually too restrictive and could be problematic for the future. So I just wanted to provide that clarity as to what my orange lines were.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments or recommendations on if what's in green is worth including, or if it should be dropped and just go with what's in orange?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody in the room. Kevin, and then I've got Denise.
Yeah, thanks. So I'd be interested, Kara, if you could clarify, when you said you would prefer to go back to the original language, I'm a little bit lost about now what the original language is.
Before you get that answer, if you would like to view just the original policy, it's included in the packet where you have both the suggested revisions and the original text.
So without bouncing back and forth, how does the original text differ from what Julie has suggested?
The change from the current policy that's in place, it would strike language that prohibits interfund loans from employee retirement benefit funds, and it would add or other funds that are legally restricted. And then it would add the line, "Loans from the early retirement fund may only be done for operational purposes and must be repaid in the following fiscal year."
Okay, I've got Denise, and then Steve.
Hi, so hearing that language must be repaid in the following fiscal year. It seems like that is very close to repayment of the loan must be budgeted. I mean, that would be, I don't know if we want to say in the fiscal year that it occurs, but in total, I think being too specific about the eighth quarter payments, I think that's too restrictive. However, I think it does need specificity and protection. And so I think that the repayment of loan to be budgeted specifically with an approved schedule and at a stated rate of interest, I think that is specific enough to make sure that it's very clear the intent and restrictions for this kind of loan. As I understood our previous discussions, this was really, the intention of this was to avoid high interest rates from going to other marketplaces rather than interfund loans. So we were, if I remember correctly, we really wanted to be able to save what would be charged by an outside lender.
Yes, that's correct. That is the goal of the revisions here, is to give you the option to loan from the college itself instead of seeking loans externally and paying the interest to the banks.
Chair, we have two questions here, Steve Mattel and then Austin Fullnagy.
Thank you. Steve, and then Austin.
Thank you. Yeah, so I am supportive of the staff recommendation because as I understand it, they are trying to give us sort of maximum flexibility for, you know, because we can't fully anticipate the range of issues we might encounter somewhere down the road. And I also get the, you know, the interest in constraining future boards, ourselves included, because, you know, especially around the retirement fund, right? We want to be clear and certain that we don't ever set up a situation where we borrow money from that early retirement fund and without the ability to repay it in full and soon. And so that all makes sense to me. But I think we could, I think we can follow the staff recommendation because should they ever decide that a loan is necessary, all of these issues would come to us at that point in time for discussion. So if they came to us to say, "We think we should do an inner loan, and it should come from the early retirement fund," at that point in time, that's when it's appropriate to talk about the repayment schedule and the interest rate and whatever else would be necessary to ensure faculty and the institution as a whole are intent to repay quickly. So I think we are better off following the expert advice of Kara. Give ourselves a maximum flexibility for now and get into the weeds if and when an actual situation arises.
Thank you.
Austin next, and then Chair, we have Austin Fullnagy next, and then Julie Weisman.
Thank you very much. Austin.
Chair, thank you so much. Two questions for Kara, really quick. One is about the intent of the following fiscal year. If, it's not necessarily saying that we are going to pay it in the following fiscal year is the latest that we would pay it. So we could pay it earlier than that, essentially, correct?
Correct. The requirement would be you have to pay it within the next fiscal year, but you could do it the next month.
Yep, exactly, yeah. And then, oh my goodness. And the last question, oh. Actually, no, no, I'll skip that question for now.
Okay, I'm fine to follow the staff's recommendation. I just wanted this conversation. And so my comments were really to, if we're going to move forward with any of the suggested language, then I would prefer to have it be a little more general. But I'm absolutely in line with the original text and the recommendation from staff, so I can withdraw that orange text if you'd like.
Can we, Brett, can you back to your recognition language, and we can just do a final check-in and move on?
On board docs, it's the first one. Yeah. And page three.
Okay, we could scroll down a tiny bit more to the green edits.
There it is.
Making sure that everybody sees what it is, and if there's any more questions or comments. But I think what I've heard from folks is that they are generally comfortable with this language, keeping in what was in orange in Julie's document, I believe, is the last sentence of that first paragraph. So it is in there. And, yeah, anything else on this before we move on?
Chair, I remembered my second question.
Yes.
Is there any legal restrictions to retirement funds and interfund loans that we need to be aware of?
No restrictions any different than any of the other funds.
Okay.
And it would all be referenced in, if the board had approved an interfund loan, it would be included in that resolution that you would be approved.
Okay, and obviously, it would be a board vote to do that vote, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Zach, quick question. I just want to make sure I'm clear now because there's been a lot of versions and texts, et cetera. So is the text we're looking at up on the screen is the staff recommendation, that in green is your ads, Kara?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, for that discussion. I'd like to move on to the agenda setting discussion. Can you pull up the supplemental documentation document for me, please?
Hey, and Chairman Mulholland, again, we're moving the BP 275 on to the next board meeting for action. Just want to put a fine point on that for the record. Thank you.
Is this it, Zach? Yeah, if we could scroll down to the tables. And so I spent some time over the weekend. I did my best to look at other community colleges in Oregon and how they handle some of their agenda setting in their board policies. And generally, what I found is that most boards, the ones that I looked at, have a check-in with either the chair or an executive committee prior to final agenda approval. Generally, those agendas are built by the president in consultation with either the chair and vice chair or an executive committee, which, from what I can see, has either consisted of an appointee appointed by, so the chair, the vice chair, and an appointee appointed by the chair, or the chair, a vice chair, and the previous year's chair. And so I wanted to talk with the group, you know, there's a proposal to effectively remove the chairperson's agenda setting role. And I think it's really important that as a public board, we remain, have the final agenda approval be happened by the board leadership, either a chair or an executive team. And I was hoping we could have a discussion about what the preference of this group is in terms of finalizing agendas, and if there is a preference. You know, obviously, I think it's really important that board members approve that final check-in. And again, I'm open to a chair doing that. I'm also open to an executive committee doing that. I think it would actually be really valuable, potentially, to have the previous year's chair serving on an executive committee, helping to decide what goes on to final agendas. And so I think I would just like to open it up to discussion and see how folks in the group feel about it. If they are comfortable with sort of the current system, where the chair has had that final agenda setting authority, if they want to move to an executive committee and what that executive committee could look like, or if, you know, the chair doesn't have any authority around agenda setting, and if that's what you're comfortable with. So I'd like to open it up for discussion, and it looks like I see Austin's hand raised and look forward to hearing from other folks.
Excellent. Thank you, by the way, for your research about this and the other community colleges. I'm supportive of the idea of an executive committee. I think it would allow for a more refined version of what we currently do with the chair, the vice chair, with collaboration of the president. And I'm open to the idea of either an appointed third person and/or a previous chair. So I'd be curious about the discussion about that. But overall, I do like this executive committee model because it allows, again, it's more refined version of the meetings that we currently have with the president, vice chair, and chair.
Chairman Mulholland, I'm going to need to check in with Brett on the executive committee notion. I don't know the history of that here at Lane. I don't believe that we have an executive committee. And I wonder if that is something that should actually take place when the organizational meeting happens, which is the first meeting of July. But so I think I want to check in with Brett on the executive committee just notion because we have not had an executive committee since I arrived here at Lane or even before that, that I'm aware of.
Chairman Mulholland's hand is up, so.
Well, I would just think that in the board policy, it says that the president would develop the agenda in consultation with the chair, the vice chair, and a potential third person. So I think we're halfway there already. It would be formalizing that as an executive committee that we already sort of have, but not quite. Brett, please.
Thank you, Chairman Mulholland. The history I was going to provide, this board did have an executive committee. It lasted one term. And then the board abandoned that structure. And in its place, revised the agenda setting policy to add the statement that says, "In addition, the board may designate an additional member to the agenda setting group." And this was done when Lisa Fraglo was stepping down as chair, and she moved into this role as a previous past chair. And so you do have, in your existing policy right now, the ability to have the chair, vice chair, and a third member of the board's choosing, which in the past has been the previous chair, to serve as kind of an executive committee for agenda setting purposes. But that is your current policy. So you have that ability right now.
Since Zach can't see you, we've got Steve and Kevin's hands up.
Eve, and then Kevin, please. Thank you so much, Julie.
I was under the impression, mistakenly, apparently, that the way we did it up currently was the president in consultation with board chair and vice chair. That's what I thought was happening up until now. When I was at the E-Web board, that's exactly how it ran, and it worked really well. It fosters collaboration between the president and the board, the board leadership. We rarely had an issue come up that couldn't, actually, never. I don't know why I said rarely. I can't even think of a time where we weren't able to just, whatever. I mean, usually, the issues were like of the minorst thing. Like, should that be five or 10 minutes longer or less? Those are the things that came up, and people quickly resolved them. And at the end of the day, everybody, the relationships were strengthened as a result. So I would caution us about making this any more complicated than it needs to be. Board chair, vice chair, president, I don't have any reason to think that that wouldn't result in an agenda that worked really well for everybody.
Kevin?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm ambivalent about further complicating the process. What I'd like to speak to is the necessity of incentivizing collaboration and cooperation with the president. I feel strongly that that has worked, will continue to work, and I would not be comfortable with a chairperson having the ultimate authority to overrule that process because I think that could be abused in the future. And I think as a policy-setting board, we need to play that thought experiment out into the future and make sure that our policy decisions, to the best of our ability, restrict and contain any possible abuse of that authority. So I'm very much in favor in continuing the process that we have. And I agree with the staff recommendation for Board Policy 2340. And I feel strongly about the collaboration and cooperation aspect of the process. Thank you.
And Chairman Mulholland, I just want to say that there is fidelity, certainly on my part as well, in terms of wanting to make sure that the process is collaborative with the chair and the vice chair and whomever else per board policy would be part of that group.
If it helps the board, just to give you a sense of how I came to the recommendation that I submitted to President Bolger and the board, I included behind Chairman Mulholland's summary that was distributed to the board last night, additional documentation that shows the generic OCCA policy language as well as policies from nearly 10 other colleges from around the state. And you'll notice the language is pretty similar in all of those. And part of the reason for the desire for collaboration is that the president is your one employee, unlike other bodies that may be in the legislature or have a stronger chair that oversees agenda setting. This is an instance where the president, who is tasked with helping set or create an agenda with the chair and vice chair, is your employee. And then you also approve and can make changes to any agenda, the first thing you do each meeting. So that was kind of the thought behind the recommendation.
Can I speak?
We have Julie Weisman over here, Chairman Mulholland.
Yes, please. You're up. And if anybody else wants a first round, we will do that. And then we can move to a second round if anybody has anything.
Great. So I'm opposed to expanding the authority and power of the chair position outside of what's already in the current language and the proposed staff recommendations of change. I'm not sure exactly why we want to make these changes. It begs the question for me of like, what isn't working with the current policy? It begs the question for me of like, what isn't working with the current policy? What aren't you able to do as the chair or anyone else? It seems like it's an unnecessary expansion of the chair role. And kind of staying in the lane of being a chair and a facilitator, not the power and president of the of the college. And you know, the 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 chair has no authority at the college whatsoever. They don't have the authority to speak directly to staff and to direct staff. They don't have the authority to create policy on their own. They don't have the authority to go out and speak on behalf of the board without our knowledge or awareness or approval. And so to expand based on some of the things that I've seen, expanding the authority of the chair when we are volunteer unpaid board of education who have hired an outstanding CEO and president of the college with $21 million budget, thousands of students and hundreds of employees. I'm not sure how one of us who is just appointed and voted on his chair suddenly becomes the director of the college. And so that is, I'm adamantly opposed to the expansion of the power and authority of the chair position on the board of education. I think it works really well, the way that it is in collaboration with the president and with the vice chair and however the language is there. And so I am, I am not in agreement at all. I think we have to have kind of guardrails and lanes that we have to boundaries of where each one of our roles as a member of the board and what we can do and can't do. And if we have things that we really want to have done, we put it on the agenda, we discuss it and we give direction to our competent employee who is running the college at our behest. And then we assist in the strategic going. I may have more to say, but that is pretty definitive.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Julie. I I think I would like to start by saying that the proposal from staff is to de-power the chair and to delete the powers of the chair. This is not about expanding the powers of the chair. This is about defending the existing powers of the chair, which are in part the existing powers of this board to decide what it talks about through its agenda setting process. And so as a public board, a publicly elected board, I think it's incredibly important that we ensure that agendas are forward thinking, are ensuring that the board is able to input in a constructive manner. And so, you know, I just like if at the federal level, I think many would want the Congress to defend the powers of the purse. I would say, you know, this is a publicly elected board. And agenda setting, at least the final check off of saying, looks good, should remain in the board's hands. And if you don't want that to be in the board chair's hands, then I think it should go to a board executive team rather than removing any hand on the steering wheel with regards to how this board operates and handles its business. I I have nothing but the greatest respect for President Bulger and the work that she does. I greatly appreciate the collaborative process that we have in setting the agenda. But currently, we have two policies on our books, one that says that one person develops the agenda and another person sets the agenda. And according to OCC, there's nothing in conflict with those two things of having our staff person develop in collaboration, but then having the leadership having that final authority. And so it sounds, you know, I think if everybody can just please let me know which side you fall on on those three options of removing the chair's role entirely, replacing it with an executive committee, or maintaining the chair's role as currently exists to provide that final check off before agendas go out.
Chairman Holland, oh, we have trustee Al Tucker first.
Please, Kevin. Thank you.
Zach, you say the proposed changes would actually de-power, I forget the term you used, the chair's role. I don't, I'm curious to find out why you think that.
The proposal is to delete the chairperson language that includes agenda setting authority.
I'm looking at the proposed policy and it says agendas shall be developed by the president in consultation with the board of education chair and vice chair. In addition, the board may designate an additional member to the agenda setting group.
And if you go to board policy three twenty, you'll see the language that says that the chair has the authority. The question went to Oregon Community College Association saying, you know, are these in conflict? And their message was you can do both of these things. It is entirely possible for the development to happen and then the setting to happen and for there to be an interplay between those two things. And so as it stands right now, we have a policy on the books that says that the chair has the agenda setting authority. In my mind, that agenda setting authority is the sort of the final check in after the development process. But if we're going to change that, I want that to be a well thought out decision, saying we are saying that the chair no longer has the authority to say, yes, looks good, it's final. And we're not replacing it with an executive committee. So it's basically just going to be whatever the president puts in front of the chair. That's what the agenda is going to be. And I don't think that that's how a public board is supposed to operate.
Mr. Chair, I just would like to state that the the staff recommendation is no way meant to de-power the chair. And in fact, the reason these three policies are before you is because the board more recently adopted the two OCC policies. And in my opinion, at the time, failed to address the fact that there was an older policy that they did not roll into the two newer policies that were adopted. And I I acknowledge to Chairman Holland that when I read the roles of the chair, board policy, my interpretation of it was was not the way he interpreted it. So I think there is a need to provide some some clarification on the board's intent. But it was my belief that since the board more recently took up the agenda setting policy and passed that, that that was the intent of the board at the time. And so when I made the the suggested revisions for the other policies, that that was why I I did that. And I also looked at the language from the majority of other Oregon community colleges and probably set agendas. And and that's how we landed. But it was in no way meant to to de-power the chair.
And I would say, I would add that it's no way, in no way designed to expand the authority of the president either. That the intent of that language is still that it is a collaborative approach, a collaborative approach. I would also add that. And I don't know if trustee Al Tucker, you have more?
I do, but I'll give others a chance to speak before I jump in again.
I'm not clear about what problem we're trying to solve exactly. I don't think we have a problem.
If there's a disagreement between the president and the chair and the vice chair around timing, around discussion items, those those items are going to come up inevitably. And I think people know where I stand on it. Denise, please.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's the the question that sometimes has to be thought through is collaboration is a, you know, a wonderful thing, but collaboration isn't perfect. And so what are the processes that are in place when a decision has to be made that perhaps is difficult, controversial? If what is the purpose of the board choosing to have a chair? Nominating and electing a chair, right? So there are some very specific roles there. And I do think it's important that this agenda setting mechanism is extremely collaborative. But I also think it's naive to think that it's doesn't have its point, its moments. Because that would be naive. So I do think that the opportunity to put things on the agenda by other members of the board does give us some guardrails. However, you know, agendas have to be set in a timely manner and we have to move forward on our work. So I think that's that's part of the discussion we have to be aware of.
Trustee, Chairman Holland, we have trustee Foneggi.
Yes, Chair, thank you. I've heard a few board members saying, hey, I like the way we do it currently. If that's the case, then potentially, then potentially probably the best next step here is to not move either one of these board policies forward. But yeah, anyway, so that's just a observation there that I would just point out. And yeah, I appreciate this conversation.
I would appreciate it if everybody could just state clearly as possible. Would you like the final agenda setting authority to sit in the hands of the president, the chair or an executive committee?
You like the best of three false or incomplete options.
Yeah, Sophie, you haven't talked yet.
Sophie, please.
Okay, thank you. So I I think that having this collaboration is really important because it offers multiple perspectives for multiple different things. The chair has the perspective that faces the board and the president. And the president faces the students in the community. And all of those things are really important when it comes to agenda setting. So I think there has to be some of this word collaboration when it comes to this. And it's really important for the board to move forward thinking about that. Because, you know, we serve a wide range of different people in the community and we should be getting all of these perspectives and doing it in a timely manner. And I've heard some of the board members talk about there being some, you know, issues that come up when it comes to setting the agenda around timing, et cetera, et cetera. And that just ends up being how things work when you have to collaborate and you just got to work through it. So I'm really I personally haven't seen the issue of, you know, doing the agenda in the way that we have been doing it as it does foster that collaboration. So that's what I think. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the collaborative approach with input from the president, the chair and the vice chair has worked. I don't include board members in that with input from the board members. It's worked. I believe that's a balanced and open and transparent process. And I would be very opposed to having the final say be in the hands and the decision of the board chair. Thank you.
First, it's really hard for me to even grok your three scenarios, Chair, only because we got that information late last night. I haven't even had a chance to truly digest every option that you just read at us. But with that said, looking at the policies that we have is that I'm just I'm just not, I don't back to Steve's, like, what problem are we actually trying to solve? I have, I believe that the board in a collaborative setting where you have the vice chair, the chair and the president, I can't imagine a scenario at all where the three of you are having a conversation and you don't reach an agreement. And somehow or another, there isn't a decision that can be made. If it's regarding the agenda, then maybe that's the problem. And maybe there's a poll that needs to go out to the board. Maybe there's something else. But the president is the one who actually knows what's going on and the critical nature of the conversations that need to take place in the board. The chair is not the agenda creator. The chair is trying to manage the facilitation of the board and trying to get the timing down the whole bit. But I just can't imagine a scenario of which we have to make sure that the president has the final authority. But what I can think of is a scenario where we might have a chair disagree with the president and say, I don't want that on the agenda, or I want this and I have the final say, so it's going on the agenda. And it's contrary to the president. And at that particular point, I don't think the board of education actually wants to give the chair that authority to make an unilateral decision on behalf of the board. The chair position in the board of education is not the president of the college. The chair position in the board of education is given the task of working with the president collaboratively and facilitating our board meetings. And so I kind of like the suggested edits. And if we can't get to there, then I I'll make a motion to table this to another time. But that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Julie. I see Austin.
Yeah, to answer your three, your questions of the three options there, based of what I heard from the student and the the concerns of the board, I'm open to the idea of the executive committee.
Thank you. You know, this proposal is from staff. I am pushing back against it because I think that there is a concern here of losing this authority. To your point, you know, if the chair makes a decision that you don't like, it's very easy to overrule the chair through Roberts rules. We have a process where any three board members can add something to the agenda. It's very easy to strike something from the agenda. But, you know, if you look at the the chair's roles, one of them is to previously was to set the agenda to ensure that the board remains forward looking and value added in its deliberations. And there might be a time where there's a proposal to move something too fast for the board to actually actively participate in that process. And you rely on your board chair and your vice chair and potentially an executive team to make sure that we are doing our jobs well. And so just to to be clear, it's very easy to overrule the chair if you disagree with their decision through existing Roberts rules. And you elect a new chair every year. So it's very easy to replace your chair if you don't like your chair. Any other comments? I I think I've heard from Kevin that they don't like, you don't like the chair being in charge. I think I've heard from Austin that he likes the idea of an executive committee. I think I've heard from Julie, she doesn't like the idea of a chair being in charge. And so I wonder, is there
I really do not like your way of actually qualifying what my opinion is. I did not say that I did not like the chair being in charge. And I didn't, I don't, I don't appreciate it being said that way. I just disagree with the change of this policy. And that is it. But please don't characterize my statements.
Okay.
Please say that I disagree with you.
Okay, I I recognize, I I, my understanding is that you are supportive of the proposal to delete board policy three twenty that includes the chair's agenda setting authority. Apologies if I misinterpreted that. Can I hear from Steve and Denise if you have any preferences with regards to those options that, as far as I know, are the options that we have?
My preferences was, I think, stated before, but I'll state again. I like a collaborative approach with between president, chair and vice chair. And until I, until we have an example of that not working, that's fine. That works for me.
So you're supportive of the proposal to delete the chairperson's role? Am I understanding that correctly?
Again, the characterization, it's already been stated that we're not deleting the chairperson's role. This is actually what's in the language.
Propose is to delete board policy three twenty that includes the chair's agenda setting authority. I don't how, I don't see how it could be interpreted any other way.
But in any case, I I think what I said was pretty clear, Zach. So I think you've got it.
Okay, so I've got, it sounds like three people are supportive of the proposal as written. And as far as I know, Denise and Austin and I are on the other side, supporting an executive committee or maintaining the current role of the chair. Does that sound correct, Denise and Austin?
Chairman Holland, we have trustee Gibson.
Trustee Gibson, please.
Thank you. So just point of information for my own clarity, that means that board policy twenty three forty would be the policy that dictates how the agenda would be set.
That is my understanding, where the board, president, chair and vice chair would be consulted.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, trustee Gibson asked if board policy twenty three forty is how the agenda would be set. And you have used the exact same language when referring to the older policy that says the chair sets the agenda. And so that is, that's the potential for confusion between the two policies. I know that Karen Smith from OCC provided use of guidance on how the two policies could work together. But in that guidance, she also said if it is interpreted in a way where the two policies conflict, the normal practice for bodies is to go with the policy that was more recently adopted by the body.
And she said that if the chair thinks that they conflict, then she go with the newer one. I don't think that they conflict. I think it's I think it's entirely possible for one person to develop an agenda and then someone to set it to finalize it.
Chairman Holland, we're certainly comfortable with, with no action, not having these policies move forward to the, the next agenda, which would be in two weeks.
And, and these three policies were brought forth at the request of the board because of the potential for some language not being clear. These do not have to be brought forward to the board for a regular review because they are within the board's five-year process. We can bring these back when, when it's appropriate for their, their regular review, if that's the board's desire.
Table indefinitely. There you go.
Thank you.
Sounds like we will maintain the current policies, both of them, and the current interpretation that the, the president will develop the agenda in consultation with the chair, vice chair and what to one additional person, with the chair retaining the agenda setting authority under BP 320 to have the final approval approved by the chair. And that is what it will remain as unless there's a change to these in the future. Thank you.
Chairman Holland, actually, I didn't quite hear that. But what we, what will happen is that we will keep the three policies as they are. But per the guidance that we received from the OCCA attorney, then the policies that were last reviewed, the four-digit policies, which was always the intention of the institution was to retain the four-digit policies and not the three-digit policies. So.
And President Bulger, the, the advice that we received from OCCA was that these policies were not incompatible and that it would be up to the chair to decide if they were incompatible. And that if it's the chair that thinks that they're incompatible, then it's the newer one that applies. But I want to be clear, I do not think that they are incompatible. And based upon their recommendation that they are not incompatible and that it would be up to me to decide if they're not, I'm going to stick with, the chair has the final agenda setting authority. That is the board policy that exists on the books. And I'm going to fight to retain that authority as long as I'm chair of the board. Thank you.
Chairman Holland, I certainly respect your viewpoint here. The, the board operates as a collective body. I just want to say that, that the board generally operates with a, as a collective body. I will certainly take a look at the language again from the OCCA attorney. But perhaps this is a conversation that the board chair and the vice chair could have with me. I'd appreciate that.
I, I am perfectly happy to do that, but I just want to be very clear that the legal advice that I have received from OCCA is that these policies are not incompatible. And that it would be up to the chair to decide if they were not incompatible, in which case it is then that the new policy would take effect. And as long. As long as the old policy stays on the books, I will continue to act with the authority that the board policy gives to the chair. Thank you.
Zach, do we, Chair, do we have a copy of the legal guidance?
Previously, and I'm happy to forward it again.
Hi, Chair.
Yes, Austin, then I think.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, you did forward the, the document to us previously, to the entire board there. And I agree with various aspects of your opinion of that reading and the opinion of the legal through my experience with OCCA and what I've seen in operations. And again, I really appreciate the research that you've done with other community colleges and how they operate. Yeah, I think we have a next step on this.
My, my understanding is that we will not be bringing these forward on the next April board meeting. Thank you.
Can I request a recess, please?
Without, unless anybody's opposed, grant a five-minute recess till 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Do we have everyone back in the room? Hello?
Yep.
Are you ready to begin? Okay, I'd like to call the board meeting back to order, please. Our next item is a financial data discussion. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
I believe that we are resuming the meeting. Could we have everyone take their seats, please? Thank you.
Well, the LCC board meeting back to order. Our next discussion item is a financial data discussion. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
Yes, I'd be happy to. The board may recall the second quarterly financial update from two weeks ago, which outlines strategies to strengthen our financial position. Tonight's discussion will provide further clarity on ending fund balances, including sub-fund deficits that the board has identified as areas for attention. We'll also review the composition of the roughly $80 million referenced in the last meeting, noting that a significant portion consists of restricted funds that are not available for general use. Additionally, while enrollment increases have contributed some additional revenue, these gains remain modest relative to the pace of rising expenses. As we look ahead, it will be important to consider that the absence of adjustments, particularly as personnel costs continue to grow, have contributed to the college's financial condition. Cara Flath will ask Cara to come to the podium to provide a detailed overview. And we will also discuss key considerations for April's tuition and financial planning discussions. Cara?
Hi, thanks for having me here. We can move on. We'll just move right into the next one. So the discussion points we'll discuss that President Bulger gave you a highlight of, yes, we want to talk about the general fund history, ending fund balances. You've heard me discuss a lot about sub-fund deficits, why they're an issue, and I want to give you a specific type of example of why that would be. And then leading into your decisions that you'll start making beginning next month is the forecasting levels, tuition comparison being what tuition increases are tentatively expected to impact our budget next year. And then what enrollment scenarios would look like for us. If we move to the next one.
Can you do full screen on that share doc?
It's a PDF, so.
Well, he is setting this up. What I'll, what I'll set up for this is, this kind of took me back to a, a different time. I'll give you a quick little story. I used to have a, one of my financial classes in my master's degree, I had a person who talked about, you know, financial reports and how fascinating they are and how interesting. And I used to joke that he was a little, little numbers nerdy. And then when I saw this picture, I felt that. I was like, this, this picture, and this is the nerd coming out, but is really a fascinating picture and I'll tell you why. I had historically, since I've been here this almost one whole year, had been looking at 2019 because that's, that's kind of the pre-COVID year. So everybody is trying to get back to pre-COVID and what it looks like. So some comments that have come up like, look at, we need to look at farther back and look at what the college's history is. So in fact, fiscal year 2014, and as you can see, the ending fund balance, when you go through 14, 15, 16, through 15, 2016, you know, 2015 and 2016 had 16 and almost 16% ending fund balance both years. That's a pretty healthy fund balance. But then you see some steep declines beginning in 2017, 18, then 19, 20, 21, 22. And what's interesting about this, if you go back and look at this, the three-year average of enrollment and state funding started to dip in 2017 and 2018. So we went from, you know, 10, 11% to 88% in 2017, 2018. But what didn't correspondingly happen is a reduction in expenditures that allowed for that revenue decline. So it was a pretty steep decline, one year to the next. It was 10, almost $10 million. So that's pretty substantial, right? And then knowing COVID hit, you look at 2020, fiscal year 2020, that's when COVID money started to impact the college. So in 2020, we received 148,000 that helped boost general fund. 2021, we received 12 million. 2022, it was 4 million. And then 2023, it was another 1.2 million. So collectively, that's almost $18 million in COVID money. And that is when I tell you, the only reason we have an ending fund balance is because we had those years of COVID. So but, but not for that, we would have depleted all of the general fund ending fund balance and cuts would have had to be made. So, you know, we didn't want COVID, but in what, in one sense, that kind of helped the college. So you have an enrollment trend and then you also have, you know, increasing expenditures in salary staffing levels, just costs of people because people, even during COVID, we saw 30% increase in inflationary, right? So you have to pay staff more. And so you see all those pictures kind of come together. So I wanted to give you that particular history and wanted to caution that as we continue to look at that, that's where the president's going to be challenged by looking at sustaining a healthy ending fund balance. And knowing that the college used to be at 16%, is there a way to even get back to 16%? It seems unachievable right now, right? Because it's pretty dramatic. But it's something we should start strategically looking at and building towards as your financial person. So. Going on to the next page. Total ending fund balances, one of the discussion points was, well, the college does have 80 million, 86 million in the ending fund balance, unaudited. But what I, what I wanted to make sure the board understood and college community is that over, you know, 80% of that is capital projects alone, which is, it's okay. It's hard to find good help these days. I'm just joking. He's great. Anyway, so capital projects is 80% of our ending fund balance, right? And that is really, that is directly related to bond projects. So that's bond funding sitting there. That's restricted. It's not money we can move around. It's not money we could even use. So we have very limited unrestricted funds. So you have a general fund, which is of the total pot in this particular scenario because it's unaudited. It was 10% of our ending of the 86 million. And then you have internal service funds, which isn't even enough to register. And then the rest are all restricted funds. You can't use financial aid, couldn't use early retirement. And Fund Nine is all restricted pots from fees and other areas that are collected. So the ability to use the 86 million, while it sounds really healthy, is, is not as healthy as it wites out in the exterior. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Next page. So the sub-fund deficits, I wanted to give you an example. This particular, again, unaudited, I'll keep saying that until our audit is finished. These are the areas where we have sub-fund deficits. General fund has 1.4 million, internal service fund 200,000, so on. I wanted to give you an example of, the largest one is 4.2 million, which is Fund Nine, the administratively restricted fund. And as an example, so Fund Nine, tentatively unaudited, ends the year with 706,000 as a total fund balance. So you see that. If, if there's two funds in there, so I'm going to pick on student fees, which is all the student fee collections, part of the mandatory fee, collectively had about 620,000. The technology fee, which is also a mandatory fee for students, is 970,000. Now, the health clinic is ending at 1.8 million collaboratively through the, all the years together, is 1.8 million in the whole. So if the student fee and the student fee group, which they're entitled to spend their money, had spent all their money, the technology fee committee had spent all their money, which they're entitled to do, we would have ended at a large deficit just with those two. Now, there are other areas that are having that, but this is the challenge is that we can't, we can't interchange these funds to help cover each other. We have to strategically nail down and fix this picture. Sure.
Just a quick question then, is there a reason that all of those have to be within a single fund? Why couldn't they be sub, you know, Funds Nine, 10 and 11?
Like separate them into one fund?
So that it's more easy to see the, the issues that you're pointing out.
Oh, well, twofold. One, it would be, we'd have an accounting problem, we'd be, we would be initiating in-year fund loans because we can't have negative fund balances at the end of the year. But two, these by definition of accounting standards, these are the funds they belong in. They're challenging to see, which, you know, unless people were looking at them and methodically, that's how they're getting to this areas. You really have to thoughtfully. But I understand what you're saying, accounting standards really wouldn't allow us to do that.
Those darn standards.
I know, you know, accounting ruins everything. Really does. Okay, so next page, the impact of tuition. So next month is where you'll have a recommendation from the president on what recommended student tuition rate should be. College Council's moving forward a 3.1% increase to the president. She'll bring forward her recommendation based on their recommendation, and it's four and a half dollars per credit tuition. So that's 3.1% based on our estimated attempted credits. That's about $780,000 more in our budget. Originally, one discussion was the HEPI increase was 3.4, and that would be about 986,000. And a 1% increase, just to give you an idea, that would be almost 200,000. So every 1% you add could almost be 200,000. I just wanted to give you an idea of what that looked like as far as impact on the budget. And when I had given the last picture of if you wanted to use tuition to fund any projected deficits, that's why it's 23%. Because it's not, it's a lot, and it's a lot because students have to pay it, and it's collective, it helps the budget, it's always going to help the picture, but it's just an idea of what that looks like. She's going to be.
So, yes, excuse me, Zach, we can't see your hand up because the thing is, but I can see it in the middle, so Zach has a question for you.
Thanks, Cara, can we go back to the last slide for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, Julie. With regards to administrative restricted fund nine, so you mentioned that there are these sub-funds and some have positive balances and some have negative balances. Those are not fungible, you cannot move in between those sub-funds, is that correct?
No, because most, those are, those are obtained through different fee structures, no.
Okay. And then for the ones that do have deficits, can you, A, just provide the list of the deficits? And if you, can you, can you talk a little bit about how we developed these deficits? Did we borrow this money from these sub-funds? Or did the sub-funds develop their own negative balances based upon just not bringing in as much money as they were spending?
Yeah, I can speak to what I see on paper without talking to each one of the program areas, what I'm, what I think has happened just through the years and having, there's been a lot of financial turnover. So I think working with people and not looking at revenue in the current year, but revenue that rolls over. So this is, there's, there's a pot, let's say, that rolls over. There's one particular sub-fund that has been there for probably eight years that rolled over from year to year in a negative fashion, right? And unless you're looking at that and specifically fixing that, it's going to keep rolling over. So that's one of the ones with the transfer this year, we're looking at fixing. That's not a great example of what you're talking about, but that's one scenario. Another scenario is you may have, you know, a program that brings in, like, we have a flight school that's in there that brings in a lot of revenue from year to year. And you have to methodically look at, are you bringing in enough revenue for what you're spending? Or are they just looking at current year? Because part of, I think, the pattern that's happened at the college, and it's not any one particular person's fault, it's just being thoughtful about looking at the finances. They're looking at the current year, and yet you still have these rollover balances. So I think that's where that has kind of happened, if I looked, just looking at the data, not, not speaking to anyone or looking at that. So what we've been doing with our, with the staff and the deans and the managers is looking at current year. What do you have current year? What do you have available to use so that we can not continue that bleeding in the current year and just keep addressing what's coming over? But that's my speculation, is just methodically looking at rollover balances, not just current year.
So do we know which sub-funds have annual deficits and which have annual surpluses? And would it make more sense to, for those that have deficits, to, you know, look at that sub-fund and what's funding it and adjust the money in out within that sub-fund? Or does it make sense to move the money from the general fund into those sub-funds? And it might be, you know, on a case-by-case basis?
It's going to be a case-by-case basis because each one is a little bit unique. And we are also, what I want to do before I bring forward a full recommendation to the president is look at the history of that, how that happened, make sure there wasn't any accounting errors that maybe led to it. Because there's, there's some of those things, maybe the funds were here, what they were supposed to be here, and make sure we've thoughtfully looked at that before we really start impacting any of those on a long-term basis. But in the meantime, I know that, you know, with the board's help, last year, we're starting a payment plan of at least a million dollars a year. That will start, that will keep knocking it down, so we at least need to continue that. But some of them will probably require general fund, general fund additions to keep it going.
Thank you for that. I think if we could get a follow-up that just has the list of the sub-funds and their deficits and surpluses, just so we can continue to learn more about this and think how maybe we can resolve some of those sub-funds, ideally also without general fund revenue, if there's ways to solve some of those. Thank you.
We'll be bringing that back. Thank you, Chairman Holland.
Okay, we can go to the next slide. Okay, the next thing we wanted to talk about was the outlook of enrollment. This is the history as well as the percent of increase or, in some cases, decrease from year to year. Fiscal year '25 with estimated spring enrollment is looking at about 6%. What we're looking at in the future years with a lot of unknowns is, you know, the recommendation at this point is looking at a 2% increase next year. And what I would, what I would say, and it's still being worked through, there'll be a recommendation from the Budget Development Subcommittee, and they're still discussing it, just had our initial conversations for that. So they'll bring forward a recommendation that will, will come to the president, and she'll make her recommendation for the budget. But is, the caution I have is there's a lot of unknowns on the landscape. There's certainly enrollment people that know more. And if we build into healthy of a increase in credit, and we don't achieve that, then we're back to the board of cutting current year expenses. So I'm just cautious. I think, you know, it looks like, based on everything that, you know, a realistic picture might be 2%, but we're still in discussions, still looking at that. I just wanted you to have a picture of what it looks like. Again, enrollment and what tuition credits are seeing are going to be, are going to be set based on what, you know, marketing does, based on what Columns Group does and what, what brings in all the students. So we don't have control over that like we do tuition rates. We have control over that. You set that, that's a firm rate, we move forward. This one is an estimation of what we think will happen. So there's a lot of speculation that goes into that. But wanted to give you a picture of this, and that's where you see 13, 14, and 15, going back to that first chart where it started to decline. And that's where you see that three-year rolling average was a decline in revenue. So. Just information. And based on that, if you go to the next page.
Here, Alex, we have Denise with her hammer.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I think that's wise to talk about how the unpredictable elements and maybe even listing some of those would be a good idea. Because as you said, we can control tuition, but a big factor that I think is on the horizon that we all know and are concerned about is going to be financial aid and what is going to be happening in that area. So attracting students and lots of wonderful things that are available to students. But the financial aid piece is such an unknown right now. And I think it would be beneficial, you know, what are, just listing and being aware of what some of those factors are that in fact could impact that, and that we can really see where we have control and where we really don't have any control.
Yes, those are, those are all really good comments. And at this point, it's a lot of speculation, right? We have a lot of speculative conversations, what if this and this? And, you know, we certainly discuss that. And one observation we have is that out of last year, 10 out of $18 million in financial aid was in Pell money. And there's no reason for us to think Pell money is going to decrease. But as IR staff would tell you, that's about 30% of our students are using Pell money. And the concern would be that even a delay in the distribution of Pell money could deter students, right? So there's, even if Pell money stays intact and there's no issues, which we have no reason to think there is, right? There, that delay, we're hoping doesn't deter anyone from coming. So there's, there's a lot of those and that we're working through and trying to make sure we have plans to mitigate as much strategy as we can.
Just a quick question, so I'm assuming that those kinds of what-if scenarios are this, then, that? What happens if, are going to be kind of coming forward to us is to think through on the Budget Committee while we're looking at next year's budget and stuff?
Well, we'll include what we can't, yeah, we'll include a lot of, we'll include if-then scenarios. We'll include those too.
Great, thank you.
And so this is, one of the pictures, just to see, is that 1% attempted, and it's attempted credits. So it's not necessarily enrollment FTE, but how many students take, how many credits that would be, and then the increased amount of revenue. So if we were to even get 3.5%, that's 930,000 estimated. But every 1% of enrollment credits is about 265,000. And just, yeah, that's just a picture for you to see as we keep moving forward. Okay, and what's next? I just want to make sure you always know what we have on the horizon. So you'll receive the president's recommendation for tuition and mandatory fees next month. You'll have, we'll continue our Budget Development Subcommittee discussions. And moving forward with that, we will begin the Budget Committee meetings in May. And then our financial discussions will continue. There's, again, like we're talking, they'll have statewide budget and federal landscape discussions. And we will be bringing forward the statewide CFI, composite financial index that the board may have seen in the past. Some are new, done by a company. But now the statewide group has worked with the HECS to have another calculation to go back that we'll bring forward. And we'll have a discussion about staffing resource. And there's been discussions of how much staff we've had in this area, how much we've spent and how much we've grown. So we want to have that, want to have that discussion with you and give you some data. And then again, the audit, I promise we will have an audit. It will, it will come. We have an extension through April 30th, so you should see our audit firm in May, as we hope. I don't know if I should call on you.
Chairman Holland, trustee Fullnagy has his hand up.
Please. Just a really quick comment, I want to, I just want to do a shout-out to the Subcommittee, the Budget Development Subcommittee. For those who don't know, this consists of not only our administration, but faculty, classified professionals, and students. And they do a lot of work in the development of various aspects of this budget. So I just want to do a shout-out and thank you them ahead of time because the work that they're doing right now is going to be very beneficial for our conversations as we go into Budget Committee.
Absolutely, yes, it's been a great committee this year.
Thank you, Cara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cara. Look at that, you saved 20 minutes.
Back on track.
Brownie bless.
Okay, unless there's any other questions or comments, we will move on to the next item.
Well, I did have a comment, but now I feel bad because one thing I just wanted to, and Cara, by the way, I really appreciate you so much because as a board member, I came in before this meeting kind of frantically, and you let me into your office, answered my questions, and had a great discussion. So I really want to appreciate that, first off. One of the things I just wanted to bring to the board's attention is just something that I would love some additional clarity on. So back in the March 6th Board Meeting of 2024, we passed a 4% tuition increase. And I believe, and again, I would love some more details about this. It was scenario either, I think it's actually scenario five. It could potentially be scenario two in the scenarios that we had before us at that time. But the amount that was in for the tuition that we would collect is $145. Now, what we're collecting is $144.50. Now, there is a board policy of, we round, sorry if I'm giving you headaches, Steve, that we round up to the nearest 50 cents with tuition. That's my understanding of that board policy and not the presentation amount. Because obviously, the presentation amount shows a 145 as opposed to 144.50. And, but our tuition back then was 139, and 4% of 139 is obviously $144.50. So I guess my question is, we as a board passed, my understanding of when we passed that, we were passing a tuition increase to be $145 per credit hour and not 144.50. Some additional information about that would be greatly.
What does this have to do with what we're? I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, yeah, totally, totally, totally. Yeah, so the tuition that we collect obviously impacts the budget. And obviously, this is a 50 cent difference, but since we're talking about dollars and cents, this is, and this is obviously more of a granular thing. We have obviously been focusing on the 30,000-foot level thing, the 30,000-foot level aspects of this budget presentation. But I wanted to go more into the granular, which is a tuition that we passed last year, which was $145, from my understanding. Again, I don't need an answer to this tonight, but I just wanted to put that into the board's perspective because it is something that we, that will come up, so.
Thank you, trustee Fullnagy. Oh, we have Chairman Holland, trustee Mattel.
Yeah, just an observation and a request, actually, of the board and the president, something to consider for the future, not necessarily this particular budget round. And I believe I brought this up last year, I don't know if progress has been made on it, but with regard to the development of the tuition, of tuition for the following year that comes, you know, that the president will share with us sometime soon, I don't know exactly when. At the University of Oregon, where I work, therefore I'm familiar with it, there's a, you know, something called the Tuition Advisory Group. And it's comprised of a range of folks, but most importantly, students, right? And so that group meets for some period of time and kind of debates back and forth, you know, what the tuition increase ought to be. That goes to, is a recommendation to the president. President has the leeway to make tweaks to it and then ultimately submit a recommendation to the board. I don't know what the process is here at Lane Community College, but I think there is a lot of value to having a process that involves students so that when that recommendation ultimately comes to the board, we can have confidence that students, you know, participated in.
Thank you, trustee Mattel. And we do have a process that involves students, and that will be discussed in April, I believe. And Chairman Holland, we have trustee Gibson here.
I think it's Sophie Sandris, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think the Budget Development Subcommittee is supposed to have a student forum that engages students, but this year, it was only our student representative from student government that sat on that committee. So hopefully, there'll be conversations around actually implementing the forum here soon so that there can actually be more student input into that decision, that get the recommendation.
Yeah, I'm mostly forward-looking, by the way. I'm, it's not meant to be critical of what we did this year or last year. This is mostly about making, you know, improvements going forward. I think there, especially in these times where tuition is, you know, going up and students are facing a lot of pressure, to be certain that they were robustly engaged in the process, I think is good for all of us.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I think we're moving on to the next subject. So our next item of discussion is public comment guidelines. So the Lane Community College Board of Education is considering a public comment procedure to ensure fair, respectful, and efficient process for community input during board meetings. The draft guidelines outline time limits, conduct expectation, speaker order, registration procedures, prioritizing LC students, and maintaining decorum in discussions. These proposed rules align with best, with public comment practices at other educational and governmental bodies, aiming to create a structured yet inclusive forum for public participation. A draft guideline, as well as guidelines from other institutions and public bodies, was included in board docs for the board's review. And I'd like to open up the discussion on the public comment guidelines. And can we screen-share those, please? Sophie?
Yeah, good.
I see under, well, one, I like these outlines, except number one, there's a total public comment period will be limited to 45 minutes. Could I get some background on where that's coming from and why? And then I'll have a comment.
There's been a request from a couple of board members to reduce the total amount of time. And just to say that this is a draft and we can change these numbers.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. And then I'll follow up with saying that I believe that public comment is extremely important. with saying that I believe that public comment is extremely important as the board does in a way serve our community. And so this is a place for students to have autonomy over what's going on and the ability to share their opinions to the board. And so I just am skeptical about this because I've, I've heard the word inclusive and just this time limit's not very inclusive to students that may want to share. Because as we've seen in, in the history of the board, there have been times where there are things that are really important to students, where a lot of students come and have a lot to say, or many students have a lot to say that could go over 45 minutes. And it's just really important that we keep that in mind. I see that, you know, the board can grant an extension, but I just, I'm not sure I see the point of that when it's, it's really important to give students the autonomy to be able to share. And I know not everybody wants to stay late, but that's kind of what we agree to when we come here. So.
I see Austin's hand raised.
Absolutely. By the way, this is exactly why I wanted a student on the board because this, I really appreciate your insights. That all being said, yeah, I completely, in complete agreement with this, I do not feel that there should be this limit of 45 minutes. When we, again, when we read our values, our mission and the core values that we have as an institution on the document that's to my right here. It's about community, right? How's the community connect with the board? It's through public comments and restricting it or even like hinting at a kind of soft or pressure of restricting time. I think is unfortunately negatively going to impact the public comments and people's access to public comments. In regards to things like, you know, conduct defamation, personal attacks, so on and so forth. Currently, the board chair has the power to hit the gavel and stop that individual's public comment. Give them an opportunity to either apologize, reframe, so on and so forth. So that power currently exists in the board chair. So I feel that that is also something that I feel would inhibit First Amendment rights. But we could also still have the decorum that is the spirit of this language. Overall, yes, and I, but I do appreciate the order of speakers, which includes that students speak first at the board. And again, I think that the restriction of the 45 minutes, we're not only restricting the community, but we're also restricting our student speakers too.
I see Kevin's hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of comments. I thought our last board meeting where we made the decision to adjust the time per speaker to two minutes worked pretty well. So I think the process worked well. I appreciate this draft. You know, whether it's 45 minutes or an hour, I am a little bit ambivalent about that. Public comment is an important part of this body. It's also a, something that we have chosen to do. It's, it's not a requirement. I agree that we should do it, but folks should know it's, it's not a requirement. I want to talk about the third bullet point under number two, which says a single document may not be read aloud by multiple individuals. I support that statement. So what I've been concerned about is it has to do with fairness. And so when a single issue document is read by multiple individuals, we no longer have a three minute, you know, time period. We have a six or a nine or a 12, or sometimes even longer than that. And so it, just the time weight of that particular letter really outbalances other speakers who have three minutes. So I would be supportive of that being included in, as we go forward. I like the idea of random, having LCC students be first in the queue. I like that. Students have other things to do in their evenings. And so it'd be great to have them be first to randomize the remaining public speakers, I think is a good idea. And I would support that. And I appreciate the, the effort to put this draft together. Thank you.
You're on mute.
Does anybody else want a first round before we, Denise?
Yes, and we have Chair, we have trustee Foneggi and then.
But I'm for a second round.
Julie, Julie Weisman.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll be up for a second round. Yeah, thank you.
And then Julie, thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm wondering about public comment in city council meetings. Some of you probably have experience or knowledge about that. I think the intention is similar as far as hearing from the community and being inclusive. Of course, our institution is unique in its educational focus, but the intention is the same. So I do not think that it should be limited to 45 minutes. But I do think that when it looks like it's going to be long, there are some accommodations that maybe could be made or suggested and just see if that still feels inclusive, you know? And sometimes it is particularly long and I don't know if it's ever been tried to just have a brief break or anything like that. But I do think when people make the effort and have to post ahead of time and often come or just make arrangements in order to express their public view, that it's not limited to 45 minutes are listening to it. And I'm not, hasn't it, I'm looking at bullet point one under number two, has it not, is there an issue here about relevant to agenda items or general college matters? I think, I think it's a bit rare, so to say, that it isn't that. So I'm just wondering in a way where that's coming from. And I also appreciate that we're valuing and recognizing that the students' time is different perhaps than, than other speakers and appreciating that some of them have, you know, have to public transportation, rides or other things on their agenda. So that, that would be some of my feedback.
Julie?
I always think it's good to be explicit in procedures. I, I kind of subscribe to the playground rules that playgrounds are welcoming and safe for everybody when the rules are clearly posted. But when rules are ambiguous, it becomes an unsafe playground and you're never sure if you can do what you want to do or if you could win. So I, I like that we're putting this here. It makes it really clear, gives us really nice guardrails and kind of sets the tone of, you know, like here, you want to be in the public comment, here's the procedure for it. So I don't have a problem with us having comments, you know, like relevant to the agenda items. I mean, I know that makes sense, but it should be in here that if someone wants to know what the procedure is, they can go look it up. Especially for students, we're, Sophie and I were just talking about that where students, you know, they're rotating in and out. I'm brand new. I don't always know what all the procedures are. This allows me to go find out. Each of the, I, I like that we can set some limits. I'm, I can be, to use Kevin's word, ambivalent to the 45 minutes. Although I also want to be mindful to that it's not just about the board. It's actually about everyone. It's about the students who are speaking and who are there. It's about faculty who might be speaking who are there. It might be about the agenda items and we have members of the community who are all in the room waiting to speak or to be on an agenda item. And so if we have a controversial topic and at the beginning of a meeting, we have 45 minutes, an hour, two hours of public comment, the meeting is now derailed in that we can't get to the rest of the agenda items for community members or what? We've had multiple meetings since I've been here where we've had this entire audience filled because there was five different agenda items to be discussed. So that was my only thing where I'm wondering if there's not a way to have, if it looks like it's going to be long, can it be reduced down to two minutes? Can it be set to a 45 minute let? Can we ask people to, if you're going to be saying something that's exactly the same as the person who spoke before you, can you put your name on the written document and turn that in, in writing? I mean, we do this, I waited in the queue for public testimony at Senate Finance in, in Salem. Waited online to speak and they ran out of time and I never even got to speak, so I had to send, submit it in writing. So I think voices can still be heard, as heard, I think we center student voices. I don't think we want to limit them at all. But I think there needs to be at least some, I don't know, room flexibility. I liked the two minute that we were able to do that. So I don't know if this speaks to that or if it's a little too restrictive. I don't know. I'm open to having that language be broadened, but there's two, there's too many scenarios where there's the possibility that, man, we're in a meeting until midnight, but it's not just about us. It's about everybody else that's in the room. And, and that becomes a burden, especially for all of us who are volunteers and we have lives and the people in the audience have lives too. So that's my only concern about timelines. As far as conduct and, and conduct, I, I actually want to keep the personal attacks and inflammatory language in there. Only to, as again, here's the rules. First Amendment rights do not allow you to personally attack any of us. There's decorum in the meeting. We have these rules. You need to abide by them, that sort of thing. Single document, I agree. If someone wants to make testimony, they have prepared their written testimony, they've registered their name, they have it, they should be here or they should be online or they submit, submit the written documents so that we know who it is. I read the written documents. I might be unusual, but I do. So I want to have that. I love that the students are going to go first. I think that that's just kind of a duh. And I think everything else seems to be pretty standard. So I like the rest of it. So I like the, the tone of it. So thank you.
We had trustee Mattel and also trustee Gibson and I see trustee Diamond too.
The rest of time, I think actually Julie mostly covered things I was going to say. I don't think I need to say it again.
Then, yeah, I really respect what you're saying, Julie, about people's lives and the time. And so the, I think you're right, the two minute, having like that two minutes is, is a really great idea because it gives everybody the opportunity to speak on things that they find really important in the community. So maybe the language could be changed to that instead of that 45 minute restriction. So.
I'm going to go ahead and jump and do my, do my first round and then I'll go to, I think, Austin and Denise for a second round. So with regards to the 45 minutes, I'm concerned that's too short. City Council Eugene, it's 90 minutes. So I would be supportive of having that longer. And then I, I, I thought that lowering the amount of time per speaker and allow, in order to allow more total speakers was, it sounds like that was appreciated at the last meeting. So if we want to write that into number one, that we can reduce that three minutes per speaker in order to accommodate more speakers, that seems like a good suggestion.
Can I jump in the queue?
Yes. Is this your first round? Why don't you go ahead, Steve?
Yep. Just reading between the lines, listening to all the feedback. I just had a suggestion that striking the 45 minute limit, that I, I think it gets at something that's of concern. But perhaps a better way to get at it is that, you know, generally we afford people three minutes. But when there are more than, I won't say what the magic number is, whether it's 15 or 20 or some number of speakers.
They've exceeded the seats in the room.
Yeah, when they're, so whatever the magic numbers, we could maybe debate that in their time, that we reduce from three to two minutes. But, but we don't ultimately, but we hear everybody who wants to speak. So it's a three minute or two minute and the trigger is some magic number of, of folks is what I'd suggest. And I just wanted to also recognize that in support of what Julie said and others echoed that it's, it's not just us. We, we ask a lot of our, especially our senior staff with regard to these board meetings. So we're here to 10 o'clock or 11:30, but so are they. And they had to prepare for all of this stuff. They have to get up the next day and go back to work. And I think we have said many times, or some of us have been expressed concern on their behalf of the, the two meetings a month and all the prep work that goes into it on their behalf, you know, leads to burnout, right? And we ought to recognize that this is a one way, small way that we could help mitigate that.
Okay, Austin and then Denise for a second round?
Absolutely. Julie, I actually really appreciate your analogy of the playground rules and stuff like that. But do keep in mind, we already do have rules. What I feel this is, is adding so many more rules that nobody wants to play on the playground. And that is essentially what is the main thing that I'm concerned with, with a lot of these different things. In regards to also the comments, the comments should be relevant to the agenda items or general college matters. I think we'll restrict students' participation as well because sometimes students come up here for a specific issue that we're not necessarily discussing in this meeting, but still that should be heard, that absolutely should be heard. So again, I feel that this is a lot of restrictions and limits that would reduce the power of the, of the community and of the public comment. Again, adding just to so many rules that nobody wants to play on the playground.
I've got Denise.
Thank you. I'm gonna try for a different perspective here. Being an educator who often has in the humanities where people have to stand up and speak and in public, I can attest to the fact that for most people, lots of students and lots of people, it is extremely intimidating and very nervous. And we maybe feel like we listen to a lot of public comment because we do. But for the speaker, it's a big moment. And it, it takes a lot. And I see myself and the board as a public servant in an educational institution. And therefore I don't see a time limit on it. There are big issues that come up that have a lot of concern. We, we've had a few of those in, in my time on the board. And I just think that it's part of our responsibility and our opportunity to show that the platform is available for a wide range of people to give public comment. Not everyone can speak quickly. And like I said, most people, I, I promise you, most people are really quite nervous when they give public comment. So I don't support any limit on that. I do think it's okay to say that there's going to be some adjustment if it's necessary to do so. I know it is a lot, a long night for us and, and those who speak at the end, as well as all our staff. But that's what we signed on for folks and that's okay.
Thank you, Denise.
Yes, thank you. I think I, I am hearing that it sounds like we can remove the 45 minute limit, but we will potentially articulate more in bullet one that we will reduce the amount of time per speaker in order to accommodate the greatest number of speakers possible in a reasonable time. Does that sound, is there significant pushback on that? I think I heard majority support for that. I see Austin's hand raised.
Well, and I'll, and I'll go ahead and speak from my personal experience as a board chair in that, yes, we give up to three minutes. But it's actually amazing how many people actually do not take up the full three minutes. In many cases, it's usually two minutes, one and a half minutes. And it's really amazing to see like how it, even though, yes, it does, it does seem like a lot of people are speaking and so forth. It's amazing how time is made up by those shorter speakers and stuff. So what I would just simply say is, I don't necessarily, I don't want to, I don't want to see limitations like what is being presented here today. I do not believe that it benefits the board nor the, the public that we serve.
Chairman Holland, trustee Al Tucker.
Yeah, Kevin.
Thank you. I'd just like to say I'm not in favor.
Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to say I'm not in favor of an open-ended public comment period that is not serving the public well, doesn't serve the board's business well. So, uh, you know, maybe 45 minutes isn't the right number, maybe an hour is. So I want to make sure that you understand what my position is. And I push back a little bit on trustee Fullnagy. I have never, rarely seen people take less than three minutes, uh, in our public comment, which is fine. You know, that's the allowable time, but I don't see a lot of one or two minute speakers. Thank you.
So, um, trustee, Chairman Holland, Brett Rolet would like to say something and, um, we'd like to give him an opportunity to do that. As you're wrapping up.
Uh, Brett, go ahead.
Thank you. If it, if it helps the board, just something to consider. You, I attend a lot of government meetings on the college's behalf and it is very common for there to either be time limits that are, that are set that, just like you have any other agenda item. But then they are, you know, changes are considered at the start of a meeting depending on how many people set up. But another common practice is to put public comment at the end of the meeting or split it where there's a certain amount at the beginning and then the rest of public comment goes at the end. You, some, some meetings, you have a lot of important business to do and after three or four hours of public comment, I, I have seen nearly 20 years of board meetings and there have been some evenings where the board has been exhausted by the time it's actually gotten to the business after public comment. And so if you have a desire to keep a long public comment period, maybe something to consider would just be to break it up where you have a limit at the start of the meeting. Then you do the board's business and then you can revisit public comment at the end of the meeting.
A, thank you, thank you for that Brett. Uh, I, I just, I, you know, I, I think what I've heard from a majority of folks is that reducing the amount of time per speaker when we have lots of speakers is the preferred way of going about this. Uh, and that we don't necessarily also need the limit on the total time. And I, so I'd like to sort of just put a pin in this to finish it up so that we can move to the, the next things. And then, and then I guess my only question that I would have on number two is, are there any, uh, freedom of speech issues with regards to, you know, limiting what people can say or talk about during?
Not to my knowledge. Um, Chairman Holland, um, trustee, uh, Gibson would like to say something. Can we, uh, get her? And, and also trustee Weisman, sorry about that, but that's what we're, we've got over here.
I'll keep it quick that no matter what happens, I really think we should still continue to put students first. That's all I wanted to say. That's.
Amen.
Just being clear.
Amen.
I'm pretty sure that even in Brett's suggestion of putting, I'm pretty sure the students were going on the first and everybody else is going in. And, um, so that'll always happen. Um, I, uh, I can be okay with us having, uh, no limit on the time as long as we are very, very clear. That we are going to do like what we did at the last meeting where we see that there's a lot of people we recognize were going to need to kind of ask people to, you know, do two minutes. We were kind. I mean, speaking to Denise is concerned. I mean, there was quite a few people who went over a little bit. They didn't, you know, they reached closer to three minutes, but everybody tried to, to complete themselves in two minutes. And then was a, it was a wonderful public, um, session. So, um, uh, I thought it went really well and smooth. I think it'd be nice to have this, uh, language in here. Going to two Zach to kind of move you on. I'll just take my time and just step into two now, right now. I don't have any issues with the language here. I think that, um, we've got that comments should be relevant to agenda items or general college matters. And so anybody that has a concern, a student has a concern about what's going on in the college is applicable and appropriate to speak and public comment. Um, so I think that we can, it's not really going to violate any, um, free speech issues or any of that. So there you go. There's my two cents.
Okay. Uh, well, with approval of this board, I'm going to try and, uh, work on or get some people to work on with me some small drafts to time limits to, uh, remove the 45 minute time limit and to update the language around three minutes, uh, around adjusting in order to fit, uh, people in. And as far as I'm aware, that's the only, the only major change that, uh, we're talking about. Uh, can Austin?
Uh, well, in regards to the content, um, content and conduct, uh, again, uh, personal, like personal tax, uh, uh, defamatory remarks and so forth. You as the chair can put a stop to that. Um, so I'm not sure if it's necessarily something we need to put here. And I believe that Robert's rules even explicitly, um, uh, states that, that the chair can, uh, put a stop to a particular public comment that is, uh, violate, that, um, is in violations of decorum.
Uh, Austin, if you have some recommended language changes in this area, I'm going to recommend that you, uh, recommend those as amendments. Uh, we can discuss those in full.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. I really appreciate this conversation and, uh, hope that, uh, we facilitate really great discussions from the community moving forward. The next discussion item is the Student Activity Fee Committee Recommendation. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
Yes. Um, you know, the student activity fee is determined by students. The Student Activity Fee Committee has submitted its 2025, 2026 fee recommendation for student initiated programs to me and they are coming to the board for discussion this evening. I want to thank the SAFC for your thoughtfulness and Becca Maylie for your support of the process they used this year. Vice President of Student Affairs, Colm Joyce, and team perhaps will present the final recommendations to the board.
Hello, Board of Education, President Bulger, SGA President Sophie Gibson. I want to say, uh, good evening. Thank you for, uh, being with us tonight. Um, this is, uh, for any of you don't know, Director of Student Life and Leadership, Becca Maylie. Uh, so, um, and Becca has been the advisor for the Student Activity Fee Committee for this, this year. And as, has done a lot of work with this team, uh, continuing on from what Dr. Bulger was saying. The, this year's SAFC are a really diverse group of individuals. And, and, and along with that, um, there, they include students at large, identity unions, the council of clubs, student government and other fee funded groups. This committee spent over a hundred hours working on this. They were really thoughtful and diligent. And I think they, they looked at the student fees and, and, and the groups and, and, and how these were being uh, used in, in, in a way that hasn't happened in a while. And, and, and what they were looking at, they were looking at through a lens of, um, basically, let me look here, uh, the, through student engagement, activities and cultural and physical accountability. And, and tying up again, um, I want to recognize that these students, um, really it's one of the ways students here have autonomy and authority to, to, to be able to make recommendations on where they think that the fees that are being charged to them should be disseminated at the college to different student groups. But I'd also like to point out a, a few important, I think some of the key things this year. Again, this group did some, uh, outstanding work, but with this, if, if the document that was, uh, provided here in board docs, they, um, uh, have, uh, recommended a student fee of $54.60 per term, which is a reduction of $8.47 per student from the previous year. That creates, equates to a 13.4% reduction. And SAFC has recommended using rollover student fee monies to pay off the longhouse. And this is a really wonderful, uh, gesture from SAFC. There's been fees that have been collected kind of since COVID that haven't been used. There hasn't been as much student engagement and certain groups had had money kind of building up. And so they wanted to do something really big. It would have taken the students 18 years to pay off the longhouse, 18 years. And so this is a really wonderful, uh, gesture. Uh, most of the groups received a similar feat of what they did, uh, previous years and some, some received a bit more and some less. And, and we can talk about that in a little bit. And, and I just want to mention too, this happens again next year. Uh, student groups are going to be able to, um, ask for different contributions next year as well. And then they, they can also go to student government during the year to ask for money if, if it's needed as well. And that does happen from time to time. And so, yeah.
Could you bring the document up? Did you have anything? All right. So, um, we're open to questions right now. If you have any, uh, thoughts. Yes, Austin.
Comment then a question. Uh, first off, thank you so much for explaining the longhouse situation. Because obviously if you just look at the spreadsheet, we'd be like, oh my goodness, why are we divesting from the longhouse? But in fact, we are doing a substantial service to the longhouse and investment in it. And I also just want to communicate to the community that, uh, we are invested in this longhouse. The president agrees, um, in conversations with the president about the longhouse, that this is an important asset to our institution and I greatly appreciate that. Some, a couple of questions. Um, I know there's an appeals process and I know that we've had concerns from, uh, the neurodivergent student, uh, union build, uh, but sorry, the neurodivergent student union. And, um, and I'm just wondering, um, again, this is part of my education of neurodivergent, um, uh, issues in regards to like systematic barriers that institutions have for neurodivergent, um, uh, individuals. And I wanted to ask like, uh, are we considering those things to avoid any potential barriers for neurodivergent students to file an appeal, to go through the appeals process and so forth? Just wanted to ask if that has been considered in regards to the, the appeal.
This process has been communicated multiple times. So, I mean, we're talking from September to December. Always being open. We're here to help. Please come to us if you have any questions. This is student to student. This is from colleague to colleague. Um, so there's been ample of that conversations to be like, we're here if you have any questions. They've had their procedure to them multiple times. Um, when there's the recommendations for appeal, again, it's written out. These are the reasons for it and it's up to the chair to look at the rationale for the appeal or not. Um, and yes, you has not appealed. So.
Understood, understood. Great. And thank you so much. You've confirmed, uh, my, um, my understanding of the appeals process, which is there is help, there is services to help them go through that process and so forth. So great. Uh, Chair, if I may make one more comment? Excellent. Thank you. Um, I saw that obviously there's a decrease in the torch. Um, obviously the torch has come to the board to speak to us, especially about the importance of a press and that process and the democracy and so forth. And something I want to appeal to my fellow board members because we have good connections within the community, the business community and so forth. The torch actually accepts advertisements and they, there's, you can, businesses, organizations and so forth can, uh, put up those advertisements, uh, in their student newspaper. And I just want to encourage us as board members to reach out into our networks and inform our networks of those. Uh, because, um, again, there is a decrease in the funding and that might be a possible way of making up that difference for our student newspaper so that they can continue to run those services that are really critical to, um, student newspapers and a free press. So this is just my appeal to my fellow board members. I personally am doing that with my network. And I just want to encourage that since we are seeing a decrease in their, uh, in their funding there. So.
Hey, I'm not seeing anybody else with their hand raised. It looks like.
I have a question, Zach. You can't see me yet because I haven't said anything. So the camera hasn't moved toward me yet. It's that weird moving thing. I have a, um, I just want to understand the process. So the, the student fees, uh, selection goes to student government association. You guys hear this or who makes the decision on here?
So as the procedure states, it's from the collected sets of groups. So you have up to four students at large. You have representation from student government, council clubs, fee receiving groups, um, and identity unions. So we really want students who are at large, may not be really engaged with the student activity fee and know what it does. But we also have students who are very engaged with student activity fee and knows what it does for their different groups and the opportunity for it. So that's the collection of the students who come together to make these decisions. They bring their backgrounds. They bring their awareness. They are educated on the process, um, and so on and so forth.
Is the student government association involved at all?
They have two representatives.
Just as, as representatives. So, okay. I, I, my college where I was at, the student fee was, went through the student government association. And so the student government association actually made the final decision. And, um, so I was just kind of curious what the process here was.
Yes, and that, that is something we're taking into consideration. I think working with student government next year to maybe look at this process, uh, because that is a bit more of a standard of the community.
Cause we're essentially just ratifying the recommendation anyway, right? We're not going to intervene and increase those fees or decrease them or anything like that. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Resident historian here. Uh, the student government used to facilitate the student fee. It was the request of the student government to set up the current student fee system that we have at Lane. And I, at the time, and when you look at most of the public universities in Oregon, they have a separate student fee committee that is, uh, outside of the actual executive branch of the student governments. And so I think at the time, that's what the students here were trying to replicate. But the state statute does give the authority to lead the process to the student government. So if the student government would like to, uh, change the process here at the college, they need to work with the board and the president, uh, in order to update the, the procedures to do so.
Great. Thank you.
Chairman Holland. Uh, first I just want to thank our student leaders for bringing this proposal forward. Uh, I think that student control of student activity fees is immensely important that Oregon was a leader in adopting student fees under student control. Uh, and so, uh, 100% supportive of, uh, the student proposal and would support students having, uh, total control over making that final recommendation to the board as, as is the case at, for example, University of Oregon. Uh, just as someone that came up and, and volunteered with student groups in college and learned a ton from, uh, I, I was in Osburg, but, uh, I also just wanted to note a, a note of sadness, uh, uh, for, uh, or the Oregon Student Association. And the fact that, uh, that organization's no longer with us, that, that a number of staff from that organization were in a, a, an accident and, and had a member pass away and another member get injured. And, uh, but that's an organization that served this community for decades. And so I just want to recognize, uh, the powerhouse of an institution that we no longer have with us serving students. Uh, and, uh, just to, to again, state, uh, 100% support, uh, student controlled student fees and, uh, look forward to voting in support of approving this. Thank you.
We have trustee Gibson wants to speak.
Please. Thank you.
Yeah. First and foremost, I just want to thank Becca because I was on the Student Activity Fee Committee and she has done an insane amount of hard work and support of all of the students that have been on the activity fee. She's gone above and beyond and out of her way to help us and to help us navigate. And when I say this, I mean it seriously, that the decisions that we've made weren't taken very lightly. There's been all kinds of frustrations and, you know, like very much hard work and, and dedication of these students to really, to really put themselves in the shoes of, of all students and to really just dedicate themselves to this process. And so, yeah, thank you.
And we have trustee Mattel.
Just very briefly, uh, thank you for the process. I think it's great. Uh, I'm going to support it. And, um, specifically if you just, uh, let the students know that, um, I am really inspired and impressed by their ability to come together and do something big on behalf of, uh, of all students, but for the longhouse. And that's, that's great.
If you don't mind, I'll just say this, their creativity in this process, I mean, we really looked at the procedure. We looked at this process and I said, what, what does this student activity fee look like? What does this mean to you? How does it feel? And I just let them speak. And they came to a lot of these conclusions genuinely by themselves as a collective manner and really poked holes, filled those holes. And their advocacy is a huge part why the longhouse that's been paying for 20 years had another 18 is done. So like, the credit goes to them. They, they had the creativity. They really worked and critically thought. And their student leadership skills, their, the development that you saw, I mean, it just, it's really cool to be in my job. I'm going to be honest.
I, I can see your heart going.
Got some new gray hairs going here, folks.
If I could also, uh, say thank you to Cara and Jonathan and the finance department because they really work closely with our students during this process and did a lot of research, a lot of investigative work. So thank you.
Thank you very much to all of our presenters and look forward to voting, uh, to approve the student activity fee.
Thank you.
Our final discussion item is the baseball field environmental analysis. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
Yes, I'd last, I'd like to ask.
Yes, I'd last, I'd like to ask Dr. Glover to come to the podium and maybe with Jennifer Hayward. I see you here as well. Tonight, we're bringing an analysis of environmental data for synthetic turf product materials. It turns out that we have an expert on the LCC faculty and that's Dr. Rick Glover. Rick has a PhD in chemistry and teaches environmental science here at LCC. And he's on the sustainability committee. And I also see Luis Majore here as well, who is, I believe, the chair of the sustainability committee. For this presentation and this, and discussion, Rick is going to discuss the environmental data received from vendors. And Jennifer Hayward will briefly discuss the selected vendor and products that we planned and bring forward for board approval in April. So, turn it over to you, Rick and Jennifer.
Thank you, Chair, President Bulger and rest of the board. So, i- in reviewing this data, it was really challenging because what, what you get is a whole, we asked them for a series of reports on, you know, do their products contain polyfluorinated alkyl substances, PFOS? You know, do they have crumb rubber, which contains this compound called 6PPD, which has been implicated in harmful growth for coho salmon? And what, you know, environmental benefits to their products have? So, we're looking for disclosure from the companies to, to look at their data. And so, we get the data back and it's one of those, I used to teach analytical chemistry and one of the challenges with analytical chemistry is you only find what you're looking for. So, only two of the companies provided data for us to investigate, which was really challenging. And then, one of the companies provided us some data that was, looked very clean. It was like, it, it gave us reporting limits and there was all, yep, none of these products in here. And the other gave us a very nuanced analysis, but it also showed some compounds of, of question or I wouldn't say concern, but of question. At really low concentrations. When I looked really deep, when I looked in further analysis, what I really saw was you could create the same report out of the nuanced analysis where they gave us all of the laboratory data that you could with the other company. And I really, I came to the conclusion that I couldn't really make any sort of like recommendation. And this is something that I run into a lot as someone who like understands chemistry really well and understands, you know, fate and transport of anthropogenic materials. It's really challenging to do a side by side analysis unless you have a lot of time and a lot of money to do a very nuanced analysis and what your metrics and guidelines are. And I, I think those things need to be very, very clear if you're going to be able to say one thing is better than the other. Like, if you're going to do a lifecycle assessment, you, the first thing you do is look at the scope of the work. You establish a functional unit, which is what are the things going to be measured by? And then, you look at what are the impact categories that you are most concerned with? And so, everybody wants like a, a head to head analysis. And really, in this case, I had to kind of say like, there's, there's really no differentiable or no difference between the products that I could see. So, that's what I reported back to Jennifer.
Got it.
If people have questions, I'll let, I, I don't mind them jumping in before I make some closing comments.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, first off, I'm glad you're here at this institution because I hate chemistry and you made me interested in chemistry. So, so right off the bat, thank you for being here at this institution. So, like, you know, one of the, what I'm thinking of is like longevity, the long term aspects of things and so forth. And, you know, two generations ago, there was board members like me that said, hey, asbestos shingles is great, right? And then, we, they placed them in on everywhere and stuff like that. And that's what I'm trying to avoid is something where there is a, a thing that I, that a future board member will then have to mitigate and so forth. And that's kind of, if you don't have this answer, that's okay as well. But from, am I, am I putting asbestos shingles on a baseball field?
I, I think I.
To use an analogy.
I, I think I would look at it in a different way. Look at the lifetime of the product.
Okay.
Lifetime of the product is less than a couple of decades. So, you know, any issues that might arise from future analysis would be, you know, you're, you're looking at a, a short, a shorter lifetime product. I think the other piece that, I forgot to say this in my remarks, is that the, the biggest recommendation that I had was improving the retention system that was recommended, right? You're going to prevent release of materials and a lot of the, you're talking about some materials that are not very water soluble that don't like sticking to things. And that's why they, like with polyfluorinated alkyl substances, for example, that's why there's such a challenge with them is because they don't biodegrade. The biggest issue is not releasing materials from a, a, something of question. And so, and, and I looked at some studies and they showed that like, especially for 6PPD, which is the compound in tires, is that like, if you put a bio retention system in there and you're able to maintain that, like, you know, take the top bit of soil off, replant the plants every few years, you're going to be able to capture that material instead of releasing it. I'm assuming it's like, this is just my personal opinion. I don't have data to back this up, but just my assumption is that a lot of the materials released from these are going to be small things that are carried into the water. So, little pieces of crumb rubber, little pieces of plastic particle. And so, that's, that's what I would, I would say in terms of that. Is like, put the systems in place to capture.
Got it, thank you.
I think that we had here Chairman Holland, trustee Mattel. Then trustee Weisman.
Kevin.
Trustee Al Tucker, excuse me.
Steve and then Kevin.
Well, my question was actually basically just answered. It was about the mitigation and why you think it would work. But so, I think you just answered that. And then, just a comment and somewhere in the documentation you all shared, we learned that cork, which was my preferred alternative, the thing I was like, oh, I hope that cork works out. And then, when we discovered, well, actually, it's underlaid by crumb rubber. So, I didn't see that one coming. But anyways, I appreciate you all doing that investigation, so.
That was also, when I, I saw that and I was looking through the materials, I was like, oh, this is going to be great. You put a natural infill material in. I think, yeah, I think one of the recommendations is like, as we're going to, talking in sustainability committee is maybe we recommend that future bond product, projects look to change infill materials as they become, as the technology improves. And, I mean, we have several of these other fields in that same area that don't have mitigation measures and other, other components that might make them, that might mitigate their impacts.
Yeah, I, I think our, your recommendation, hopefully our support for mitigation, the recognition that the cork isn't where we need it to be, not just for the one reason I stated, but you mentioned others in the report. The hardness doesn't work for soccer or other uses of the field. For me, that, you know, was persuasive and so I support the staff recommendation.
Thank you for your really clearly written report, Dr. Glover, really appreciated it.
I understood it.
And I'll say, my first class at LCC in 1978 was a chemistry class and it just, it changed my world, so, yay. And just, I'm going to be supporting this recommendation as well. My kind of hillbilly look at like using cork in a really wet environment, that might cause some interesting side effects for grade control or whatever. And I can just see the field swelling up.
Oops.
Anyway, thank you.
Okay, not seeing anyone else for a first round, I'll go ahead and jump in. Rick, in your research, it sounded like one of the companies, the data shows PFOS, the other, if, if they did the same analysis would also show PFOS. So, we should basically assume that.
Cannot, I can't state that the other company does not, right? With the, the, just because there's no, I, I can't say, yes, it would be there and I can't say, no, it's not there. They're incomparable in that regard because they didn't do the same tests, right? So, one of the tests, they, they put it in a big vat and shook it up with a bunch of peroxides, which are highly oxidizing compounds. And the, the compounds of, that they were able to detect at parts per trillion level were these shorter chain compounds that contain some oxidized phosphorus or, sorry, oxidized fluorine, fluorinated compounds, right? So, it's like something larger chunked up a little bit. They didn't do the same test on the other one. They just put it in water and were like, nope, none of the compounds came off in water. Does that, does that make it a little?
Yeah, so it sounds like, well, the, the time, the company that gave us the data, it shows that they do manufacture with PFOS. If it's the company, if I recall correctly, FieldTurf.
What, what was that?
Oh, FieldTurf said that they use it in their manufacturing process. So, I assume that's the one that gave you the data that shows the.
No, both companies have stated that they've recently gone through their manufacturing process and made sure that there were no polyfluorinated substances. These, the thing to note about these is they're, they're everywhere and ubiquitous. So, what they do, what's called a lab or lab control blank, where you just run water through a sample using the same techniques that you would use to gain a result on the sample of note. And with this blank, they were finding some of these compounds. I'm assuming at their parts per trillion levels in these products, it could be, you know, one of the companies used a little bit of, I went back and looked at the plastic extruder in Germany and they use a small amount of recycled plastic. It could be there, it could be coatings on the machines. It, it could be environmental contamination from dust at parts per trillion level. We're talking about really, really small amounts. And that's the really hard thing about doing analytical chemistry at such a, a, a really, really small level is you're looking at very, very tiny amounts of chemicals that could come from, I, I mean, it, it would take several years and a lot of analysis to figure out the source and what the end result was. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, I might be misrecalling from what the, what they, the environmental consultant that we brought in said. Sorry, did, was that Julie, did you want to jump in?
They could have in the past, they could have in the past because, right, when these polyfluorinated compounds came out, like remember when Teflon was like, yeah, you want a Teflon pan in your house, right? Because it's not going to stick, it's easier to care for than cast iron. The, the challenge with that is it's like, they put them on everything because then, you know, then they wouldn't wet, right? There wasn't the problem of wetability. And so, I, I bet that they used to and then they're like, well, no, let's cut back on that because they're not compounds that we need in the environment because they're very recalcitrant.
Did I hear someone wanting to jump in, sorry?
No, I was just making a snarky comment.
I have a comment when you're done, Zach, but feel free to continue on.
Yeah, is there, is there a safe level of PFOS or what, what is the safe, what is the cutoff for danger with PFOS?
Okay, so you're talking about a class of chemicals that's just carbon chains with fluorine on them. And so, each poly, like, there are some polyfluorinated alkyl substances that have been shown to be more hazardous than others in terms of staying in our water systems and having potential hazards. One of the things I saw when I was looking through EPA reports on how the maximum contaminant levels were set, one of the challenges with it is because there's not a lot of certainty, they add a high, like, when you're doing epidemiological analysis for hazard and dose response, you add these multipliers to say like, okay, well, on a RAP model, well, we'll multiply it by 10 and then multiply it by 10 again. And then, if we have uncertainty, well, maybe we'll multiply it by 3,000, right? And so, there were a lot of these uncertainty multipliers when they were establishing maximum contaminant levels. I can't, like, if you want immediate research and go through like a specific polyfluorinated alkyl substance, I could get some more information on hazard levels where they are. But I, you know, it's a very, very large class of chemicals. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just want, I mean, I think I just want to express my extreme appreciation for you and the sustainability committee taking a look at this. My understanding from the responses to information requests is that the sustainability committee is going to be writing up its recommendations and that's expected by the end of May, is that right?
We can, I, I'd say with the sustainability committee, no one except myself really had the expertise to analyze this material. And so, that's why I kind of jumped in. I think we've been talking about it and our recommendations are going to be general for what to do with fields and we can by the end of May, but it's, it's a, it's an interesting lift. I don't, I don't know, Luis, do you?
We have a draft ready to finalize it before the end of May.
I, I look forward to, to seeing that. I, I know that, I very much appreciate you looking into this and will appreciate those recommendations and look to those to help inform us as we.
Again, the hardest part about making a recommendation is what are the parameters by which thing it needs to be analyzed by? It's hard to make a, like, good or bad assessment. If that, does that make sense? It, it's, it's something I, again, I get asked a lot, like, I, I'm the dude, my friends call up and are like, Rick, should I buy this product?
I'm at the store, right? Pictures, I can just imagine the phone.
I'm on Amazon, the credit card info's in there.
I see Austin with his hand raised. I think Steve had, was interested and then I see Denise.
Yeah, I think Denise though was, she hasn't had a first round though.
Denise then.
Hey, oh, I can really appreciate the, you know, there's good and there's bad. And maybe they neutralize each other. So, perhaps a, a more informative question would be, you know, what to put into consideration? I know you're saying improve the retention materials, things like that, that have a better chance of specificity. You know, consider this and, and maybe beware of that or consider this or that rather than the deep analysis that you're indicating that you'd have to make in order to come down on one side or the other.
I, that's really helpful, thanks Denise.
I think I had Austin and Steve and then Julie.
Uh, yeah, well, first off, I started looking into polycarbons and fluor, all those different things. And holy cow, you're right, there is a lot of different ones. Anyway, the sustainability committee, will that recommendation also include like, like you mentioned, as, as technology improves and so forth to replace it with that and/or what future recommendations we can make for reduction of plastics and so forth? I, I mean, is that going to be included for like future case use for us to have guidance with?
Yes, the recommendation is going to be for future projects.
Got it.
And renovations of the existing fields.
Gotcha, and that'll come in May.
Yes, and like we mentioned, it's going to be general recommendations on what are the best practices for the field maintenance and replacements.
Absolutely. And just briefly, I just want to also give kudos to the sustainability committee with the grant that was recently received to replace our fleet with electric vehicles and so forth. So, that's, when I heard of that news, I became really excited, excited about that. So, thank you for our institution's work and your, and the committee's work for creating a more sustainable future.
Steve and Julie?
Yeah, just another comment observation. So, it sounds like there's general support for moving forward with, with the crumb rubber field. And I, it sounds like also for with the, if you know how exactly we're terming it, but the retention area. I think that's great and I just wanted to say it, that to me, it sounds like that creates an opportunity for, for research, right? So, a handful of years from now, I could imagine you and your students. for research, right? So a handful of years from now, I could imagine you and your students going out and testing that soil to see what kinds of compounds the that retention area may have prevented from going into the waterway, and eh it can contribute a lot to not just us, but others who might follow in our footsteps with a similar retention pond. So it gets back to the kind of the purpose of an institution like this altogether. So it's it's not just our field, but you know, we're you're going to end up by creating a situation that could benefit us in the future and others as well.
I really appreciate that insight. I think the living lab approach of this project is going to be really great for students. You know, being able to sample soil on a field that doesn't have a retention system next to one that does, and what kind of things that are captured by that is going to be really great side-by-side data to use. Um, so.
Publish report.
Julie, next to Nikia.
Uh, yes, thanks. I um, actually, this is probably for you. Um I'm just trying to put in where we are. This was um, so this is about the baseball field. So what's the next course of action? How are we handling this? I see that we're just like waiting for like the sustainability, but he said it's for the future. So I I got a little confusion where we were and what's coming forward.
So the bond team will be bringing the baseball turf contract for approval at the April board meeting.
Okay. And that was part of everything that we read, the recommendation, and oh my God, I actually understood you. And um and I'm not, I'm not the science guy at all, and so even your explanations while you're standing here, I can see why you're a good professor, because you can distill that really complicated information down to ways in which we can really grok it, and I really appreciate this because this is a complicated topic. And um, you know, we have people who are much, much more knowledgeable at it, like Zach, you know, that really understands this full picture, and then and I'm like, I need help here. Good. And so thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for that. I think it's really hard to um, you know, we're really reliant on a lot of uh just because of the regulatory framework that we have in the United States, we're reliant on data that's um, you know, following indicators instead of leading indicators. So I I wish our regulatory environment was different in the US, but you know, if wishes were fishes, we'd all be in the sea, as Grandma used to say.
Well, I'm really, I'm really excited to hear about the mitigation efforts and the retention because um that I saw that in our first round of conversations and went, oh, yeah, I remember capturing this stuff in my um previous um working with the planning commission in another city and wanting about that. So I'm really excited about that, too. So thank you about that. Thank you. Thank you all.
Uh, moving on to closing items, are there any board member questions or comments?
I have some.
Uh, Julie and then Denise.
Um, so a couple of things, um, uh, just taking my own personal kind of privilege. Uh, there's been some email communications that we received as board members, and one of the things I first noticed was that Trustee Gibson wasn't included in those email communications. And if we are going to acknowledge and give kind of full right and privilege of a student being on the board, we need to include that student as a board member and not actually call her a student board member. And I really appreciate how staff and um we call it President Gibson and Trustee Gibson and stuff. So I think it's really important. It's one of the ways that we start to really normalize um the student participation on the board. We include her in the e- emails and it's another board member. So that's that's one. Um, and two, I want to just address some um really uncomfortable stuff that came up at the last board meeting. Because it was a long meeting, I was exhausted and really didn't get a chance to kind of be with how I was feeling about that meeting, and it wasn't until I got home, thought about it, spent some time with it, and realized how incredibly uncomfortable um I'm trying to use nice language, but kind of just distressed and um disappointed in the manner in which we as a board treated our president. And uh I felt that there was some disrespect. I felt that there was some dismissive um body language, microaggressions, absolutely, um, and just just dismissive um feedback. I think the debate about we had about trusting our president publicly got um muddied in the interest of just kind of moving on with the subject, and I felt that that even lent itself again to even more dismissive um and inappropriate, made me incredibly uncomfortable. It felt very sexist. It felt uh almost racist in some ways. I think that a different person in the position of president would not have been treated that way. Um, and I want us to be really mindful. We talk about decorum um as something that we all um are committed to, and I think that we need to reaffirm our commitment to decorum, that we respect each other, that we address each other's chair, we address each other's trustee, Weisman or trustee Fonegy, we 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 greet each other with respect and decorum and that we hold ourselves, and that the president of this institution um is treated with the same manner of respect and decorum as the rest of us, and I just hope that we can get past it, but I really wish, and I apologize to President Bulger, that I did not have my wherewithal to address it when it happened. And I'm a little ashamed by that because I wish I had had the uh capacity to do so, and I would have done it in the moment. But I just wanted to issue a public apology for how I perceived that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, board member, uh, Weisman, thank you for sharing that. Uh, I take your points uh with regards to emails and including uh trustee Gibson, I tightly agree, and I I apologize uh trustee Gibson that I I did not include you on an email thread. I will try and make sure not to make that oversight in the future. Uh, and uh to say that the the chair and the vice, me as the chair and vice chair, Al Tucker, uh, and the president did discuss uh some of the dynamics of that meeting and had a good conversation and uh appreciating you bringing it up now, Julie. Denise.
Thank you. Um uh, I want to follow up for a a moment on um something that Steve shared that is being done at OSU uh with the students very much participating in um and giving input for the student uh tuition. Did I understand that right, Steve? I just want to make sure I'm on the right track here.
I think so, but I don't know exactly what you're going to say yet, so, yeah.
No, no, that, in fact, that exists and that the, and that, you know, it seems to be a real positive, healthy student involvement. I just wanted to throw out expanding the conversation about uh student tuition to also be inclusive of some other things that I think um technology fees, uh, the cost of uh books and open uh source materials. I think um the entire conversation of what it costs uh for a student, okay, and these very real fees, right? Um, I think that's really important um uh context and uh broadening of the discussion to get the student uh view on because they're all, you know, just because one thing goes up doesn't mean that there isn't some concerns about some other fee. And it's it's the total cost that that is, I think, a student and their uh families take a look at. So I'd like to uh I just wanted to chime in on that for a minute. Did I get any of that right at all?
Think so.
And then I had one other thing, but Steve, go ahead.
Nope, I'll go ahead and finish off, please.
Okay, and I just uh wanted to um uh respond a little bit to um some of uh the points made. Um, I do I do not find uh the, I I know we have our differences of um experiences and our different uh points of view. I do not find this board uh to behave in a racist or sexist manner, which is not to say that improving one, uh improving my own uh perspective and um awareness and mindfulness um around um biases and um communication. I think it it's always, I take it as always being uh useful to be reminded and to practice that, that I don't find um any perfection. But I do want to say that despite some of our uh heated discussions, I do not find this board to be uh racist or uh sexist, and that's just my point of view.
Uh, not seeing any other hands raised. I do want to uh add to, oh, I'm sorry.
On the other way.
Uh, I think it was Steve first, didn't it, yeah?
Uh, sorry, I haven't seen people, Steve and then Austin.
Did you have a concept?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Also, just wanted to chime in about the, I think, the sort of serious issues that were brought to our attention, and then uh uh between the last two meet, between the last meeting and now, but then again tonight, I um I take those um that feedback seriously, and I just want to appreciate Julie for bringing it up. It's uncomfortable stuff to think about and um debate certainly that much more so in a public setting, but I'll be um certainly evaluating my um and reflecting on my behavior. That's the most that I can do, and I'll um um speak to the um to our president privately and ask for feedback about how I might um improve. I think, you know, we all have room for improvement, so and invite and encourage other board members to do the same. Uh, on a positive note, I just wanted to um remind folks that um that our president's speaking essentially to the community via City Club, right? It that happens on Friday, but then lots and lots of folks listen to um that on K uh uh, listen to it on KLC say on the following Monday. I'm not sure which of those I'll do, but I'll do at least one of them, if not both, and it's a great opportunity for um for our institution, and Stephanie's a really great speaker and representative of our institution. So thank you for doing it and look forward to cheering you on.
Thanks for the reminder. I totally forgot.
Okay, uh, so Austin?
Yeah, just really quickly, um, you inspired, Denise, you inspired this uh question here. Uh, fees are al- also gone through the budget. Yeah, okay, perfect. It goes through the um uh Budget Review Committee. Um, and then um okay, gotcha. Actually, that that answers my question, and obviously students are involved in that process and so forth. Open source is uh, we have a policy around open source uh books and access to that ma- uh type of material, right? So that allows for a reduction in cost in uh uh in that, in that area as well, correct? Uh, just verify, we, yeah.
Do you have a sense of the OERs? I think that's what we're talking about here. Open Educational Resources. Did we have a policy around that? Okay, we'll look into that. No, no, there's a policy.
Yeah, no worries. I'm like thinking back like twenty-one, twenty-two time period that we passed a policy around something like that. Anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall it, but I can look up. I can get an answer.
Okay, we've been talking about incentives, I think, what to incentivize faculty to um to take them up.
We have a a rich tradition of OERs, and um we have a lot of librarians who are working on it, um, but I can't tell you um off the top of my head, the the percentage of of courses or what's been done recently. But I do know there's a huge appreciation for it on this campus.
Great. Thank you so much.
We have trustee Gibson.
Gibson has a que- a commenter question?
Yeah, I just, uh, I'm wondering about the rest of the timeline for the tuition conversation. Uh, is it the next board meeting where we're going to the recommendations which we brought to the board?
Yes, Kara.
Yep, okay, I thought something. That's all. Thank you.
Hey, not seeing any more hand raised. I'm just gonna uh read through these last two items before we adjourn. Uh, so we need to appoint a new liaison to the LCC Foundation Board of Directors to serve for the remainder of the academic year, following Lisa Fragler's departure from the role. Uh, so if any board member is interested in taking this po- position, please express your interest, and we will appoint someone at our meeting next month. Uh, so if you're not ready to raise your hand now, just at some point in the next month, uh, you can communicate that interest to uh the president and vice chair, Al Tucker and myself.
Uh, chair and vice chair, uh, I'm interested, uh, but I'm open to uh anyone being on on that as well.
I'm I'm confused. I mean, we were on board questions and comments, and then we went to future meeting dates, and I got lost what you were asking.
This is at closing items. And within our board packet for closing items, there's two things that I was asked to share. So the first is that we have an open position at the LCC Foundation. So if you are interested in serving on the LCC Foundation Board, uh, please take a look and think about that over the next month, and if you're interested, then uh let me and the president and vice chair, Al Tucker, know, and we will add you to uh the uh list of nominees at the next meeting to be selected to be that liaison.
Thank you.
So I've also expressed interest, I think, to you recently, and perhaps we've talked about it uh with President Bulger as well, but I I remain interested. I think I need to learn more, but I'm I'm interested.
And with that, I'll let um, I'll defer to Steve on that.
Oh, I think we had a few members, so we can, we'll certainly be in touch with everyone to see if you're interested and give you some more information about that. It's a fun board to be on, so you would enjoy it.
Yeah, it sounds like the one, that's where they have all the fun parties. Ring of elbows with interesting people. Um, but yeah, and and just to state, you know, I'm gonna, personally, I would defer to those that do not currently have liaison roles. Uh, that I think it's important that we have lots of our board members uh participating in those liaison roles. The last item, the sad, that I would like to discuss is an executive session, so the board will need to meet in an executive session to discuss the president's evaluation in April. Vince Adams estimates that this session will take approximately three hours to complete, so he recommends that it not be scheduled alongside a business meeting. And I would like to poll members to have this executive session scheduled for Wednesday, April twenty-third, starting at six P M. And so that will get added to the uh meeting dates, uh unless there is objection.
What?
Uh, April twenty-third is the date of that.
Thank you. I'm grateful. I know it's it's an additional three hours out of your month, but I really appreciate it.
My conference just got canceled, so I can do it.
Please note that our next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April second. The April sixteenth work session will be held at the LCC Florence Session, and with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Can I make a quick announcement? Um, just uh April the fifth, uh Avery Old Coyote and our Native American Student Association put together one of the greatest powwows in the entire region. Uh, it's a Saturday. It is well worth visiting. It really is. It's it's as big an event as as you'll see in the entire Northwest.
Absolutely. I was going to bring that up at the April second meeting, so yeah. Yeah, exactly.
It was wonderful last year. I enjoyed it.